Called to order the October seventh, two thousand and twenty four, Marshall City Council. Regular scheduled meeting, please call the roll. Here.
Member Karen.
Here.
Member Chaney Huggett. Member Gates.
Here.
Member Traver.
Here.
Member Underhill. Member Wolfersberger.
Here.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. I'll take a motion to excuse Councilmember Chaney Huggett and Councilmember Underhill. So moved. Support? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Brings us to our invocation, Bill Cole. All by pleasure of allegiance.
Dear Lord, we address you tonight on behalf of our city council and our city. I thank you for the great privilege of living in America. And our freedoms. And in a republic. And living in Marshall. Lord, your blessings on our community, on all of its families. On all of its schools, its wonderful hospital. Its places of worship and all of its organizations. These touch all of that. I want to thank you for their leadership. In the past of difficult days, challenging days. And they were there. This council was there to do what is best. Lord, new challenges come. There'll be some that are unseen right now. And as they, we are faced with them, that these would do their utmost. To observe, to listen to each other, listen to the community, but then. Do what they believe is right. And I ask your blessings on them as they do. Wisdom beyond all their experience and years. Give them that wisdom. And so for them, we are thankful and for our great city, we are thankful and. Let this all, Lord, be used now in this meeting tonight. Wisdom for civil matters. We pray it in your name. Amen. Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God. Liberty, justice, for our.
Thank you, Bill. That brings us to approval of the agenda. Under item six, we have public comment on agenda items. Persons addressing city council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of three minutes. Comments shall address agenda item topics. Public hearing items should be addressed during the public hearing portion. Of the meeting agenda, non-agenda items shall be addressed during the public comment, non-agenda items, item fourteen, portion of the meeting agenda. Under item seven, on our consent agenda, we have our city council minutes. Work session and regular session. Then we have city bills. Purchases on nine thirteen, two thousand and twenty four, purchases on nine seventeen, two thousand and twenty four. Purchases on nine twenty, two thousand and twenty four, purchases on nine twenty seven, two thousand and twenty four. We have no presentations or recognitions, no informational items. No public hearings, no old business. Brings us to item twelve, A, special event request, choose Marshall Christmas tree lighting. And twelve B, special event request for the stagecoach. Twelve C, two thousand and twenty three Planning Commission Annual Report. Twelve D, versa term, community engagement software contract. Item twelve E, R one dash six signs, signatory resolution, M dot contract, twenty four dash five four zero two. Twelve F, M dot trunk line contract. Twelve G, M dot small urban grant construction contract. Twelve H, parks and recreation five year master plan to set a public hearing. And then under item thirteen, appointments and elections, under A, Brooks Nature Area Advisory Board appointments. Thirteen B, transit, transit authority of Calhoun County Board Appointment. Under item fourteen, public comment on non-agenda items, persons addressing city council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of two minutes. Comments shall address non-agenda item topics. Public hearing items shall be addressed during the public hearing. A portion of the agenda, agenda items should be addressed during the public comment, agenda items, item six. Then we'll go to fifteen, council and manager communications, followed by sixteen in German. I get a motion to approve the. Agenda.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
I have a motion by Councilmember Wolfersberger, supported by Councilmember Gates. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Same sign. Motion carries. That brings us to item six, public comment on agenda items. Anyone wishing to speak on agenda items? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, council. Let's see, I had a lot on my mind. We get three minutes this time. Kelly Isaac, three, two, one, North Liberty Street. And it'd be interesting to see. How I could look up everyone else's name and address. Because I have no idea. But I am curious about that. Now, agenda items would be. The. The park plan. I went through it. Correct? And. It's pretty impressive. I would just like to point out that. It would have been nice if at least. Part of the effort that went into that part planning document. Went into letting the people know about the mega site. I know you've heard it over and over, but. That makes it crystal clear to me that. We were not the number one stakeholder in the planning process. The number one key stakeholder. Has been reduced to two minutes of speaking time for non-agenda items. It's disrespectful. If you make an attempt to come here and talk to the council. I, I don't agree with that. Also, the. The comments in the description of the minutes, because I probably won't come back up here, they need to be on there. Leaving a mafist disrespectful. Makes a person feel invisible and unworthy, really. Two minutes is not long enough. I will not personally cast a vote for anyone that thought restricting my comment. In a town this size to two minutes was appropriate. It seems as though it hasn't been analyzed in some time as to what is going on here by the people of the city. Obviously, nobody shows up anymore. Very, very, a lot of apathy when it comes to our local government. I did notice on the parks planning committee. I was a little bit confused as to, it said something about taking a survey. And is that the same survey that the master plan is, is put out now? And I consider myself a pretty smart cookie, but I couldn't figure that out. We're having a session Thursday. For the master planning, is that the parks? Because in the parks document, it said it was taking the open. Suggestions through October, so I'm confused. I have the planning. The, there you go.
Regis Klinger, three, four, eight Butler Court in Marshall. Had a number of items I'd like to address on the agenda items. First, twelve E, I, I congratulate the city for wanting to put more. Yield to pedestrians signs on the circle. It is definitely needed. I have a little apprehension. I should get those over the middle of the road ones. I'm not quite sure how the logos will last. Some of those trucks going through, they go off fast. I would suggest putting also on the signs themselves, yield to pedestrians also. Right now, it just says crosswalk. If you had that on the existing signs, it would be there year round, not just during the summer months. So that's a suggestion I have for the council. Item twelve F, the. M dot truck line contract. I'm just wondering, does that contract cover East Michigan? In the staff summary, it just said West Michigan, the circle to the west. Is there a separate contract for downtown, East Michigan from the circle over? I was a little confused about that because it did show snow removal as being part of the downtown under that contract as an appendix to it. So. That needs to be clarified. I, I hope you can answer that during the meeting. Twelve G on the. Barona Road. Again, I just hope that you take into my comments from previously, that we try to save as many trees as possible. Even if man's curving the sidewalk a little bit instead of going a straight line. Also. Parks and Recreation Plan. I didn't go through that. That was a separate survey, I believe. One of the goals in that was to complete unfinished sections of the North Country Trail, Iron Bell Trail, Great Lake, Lake Trail. Rerouting trails of conservation easement in the south of the major site. I'm not sure if that could be a goal of the city. It's pretty much up to the trails, organizations themselves. And I went to the county parks and recs meeting and they said that the M- Mada is trying to get them to buy it. So it would be county, not city jurisdiction in that. So. Just a note on that. Economic development. In that survey. So number question eight was developing large industrial and warehouse park sites. Seventy-eight percent of people were neutral or against that. And growing. Another tracking advanced manufacturing, that was sixty-seven percent neutral or against it. And the question ten. Some of the major things that people wanted were to improve stormwater. And flood protection and protect water resources. That was, those were ninety-five and eighty percent also. So those are important issues. Something we need to address at the major site, or major site. Thank you.
Barry Wayne Adams, six twenty-two West Green Street. Again. In concurrence with. Kelly's concern. The. Retailing of public comment time is. So egregiously violated with the three minute and two minute limit and it is a reflection of. A sign of. Indifference, just complete indifference, you know, and, you know. Puts us into a. Condition of quasi anonymity in trying to be an active agent in. In the local politics. You know, we live here, we pay the fare. And. What we're supposed to get from that is. Having our voice heard and have it heard meaningfully. But. That doesn't seem to happen. So. You know, November, November fifth will be a. A very telling. Day of events. And when reviewing the. Planning Commission report. It's quite obvious in the presentation of data that. It's not the people who are, the, the will of the people whose interest is being pursued. By the city. We see the, the string pullers and all these different master planning, planning programs to be. Mada, MEDEC. DDA. And that's pretty much just. Giving carte blanche to a, just a particular group of people. I mean, why, why does the Downtown Development Authority have. Oversight over the ambiguous category of aesthetics? It just comes down to they're gonna have their own sandbox and they're gonna tell everybody else how to play in it. You know, degustibus nondisputorum. That's not something for government or its extensions because. Mada obviously is not operating and with any sort of autonomy. It's, it's operating as an extension of the corporate state. I'll be back.
Seeing none, brings us to item seven, consent agenda. Under seven A, we have city council minutes for the work session September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four. And approval of the regular session September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four. We have city bills, purchases on nine thirteen, two thousand and twenty four, an amount of one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars and twelve cents. Purchases on nine seventeen, two thousand and twenty four, an amount of two hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. Purchases on nine twenty, twenty four, an amount of three million, two hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and one dollars and fifty-eight cents. Purchases on nine twenty seven, twenty twenty four, an amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and eighty cents for a total of. Three million, six hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars and forty-six cents. Take the motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Gates, supported by Councilmember Wolfersberger. Roll call vote, please.
Member Karen.
Yes.
Member Gates.
Yes.
Member Traver.
Yes.
Member Wolfersberger.
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz.
Yes.
Motion carries, Your Honor.
Thank you. That brings us to item twelve A, reports and recommendations, special event requests, choose Marshall Christmas tree lighting. Marguerite.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Our first special event request for the evening is a. Tree lighting ceremony that is being. Hosted, sponsored by Choose Marshall. They have purchased a twenty-six foot artificial tree and have identified an area on the lawn of Honolulu House to install it. And the lighting ceremony is scheduled for November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four at six P M. They're looking to host it with family members, community members. And have hot choc- chocolate and cookies. They are requesting the closure of North Kalamazoo Avenue from the circle to Mansion Street. And so their services from the city will be barricades. Any other additional service would be weather dependent, snow removal, ice removal, based on the time of the year. They are a nonprofit. They will receive the five hundred dollar waiver. We do not expect the cost of the event to exceed that five hundred dollars. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just had one, the. This is the same day as the Christmas parade.
This is the Saturday before the Christmas.
Saturday before the Christmas parade, okay.
The Saturday after Thanksgiving.
Was trying to figure out November third. That makes sense. Because I was just, I was thinking that, that section of road is already closed for the parade, but it's not the other.
The different day.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll take a motion to approve the Choose Marshall Christmas tree lighting ceremony, special event request for November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four.
So moved.
Support. Have a motion by Councilmember Gates, supported by Councilmember Wolfersberger. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. That brings us to item twelve B, special event request for Stagecoach. Marguerite.
Yes, Stagecoach eighteen thirty-eight is requesting a street closure of South Eagle Street from Michigan Avenue. To the alley on October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. And they are looking to host a party for the Michigan State versus University of Michigan game, including a costume party. And DJ in the evening. They are looking to have the street closed from ten A M. to midnight that day. And the city would be servicing them with barricades for the street closure. They do intend to keep the social district in effect and they are aware that this coincides with the children's costume parade that day. Which is eleven to one? Eleven to one? And so they're aware of that. They're gonna work through that and they will be billed for the services they received after the event.
Thank you. Any questions, concerns?
Is it truly just to the alley versus all the way to Green Street? Because it kind of, it, it says multiple things in the report. So. There's a picture on the map for Olive Eagle, South Eagle to Green.
Yeah, we, they requested all the way to Green, but we. Indicated that that was not something that was feasible because of needing to provide access to the alley. So we, we. Said, you know, plus that's a, it's a big area, right? To be frank, our conversations were like, that's a lot of area. Let's have the event. Let's work with them on the area that they will be using and. In the future years, we need to attack the alley. Worry about that in the future. But for now, let's, let's work with them on that portion. So that's why it's, the report is the alley. That's what will be approved is to the alley.
Okay, and then. It said to nine P M. for like live band is that versus the twelve A M. in the, in the request?
Thank you. That's a.
I just know with.
I, I read it from ten A M. to midnight was the event time request. However, the live music was only from, well, I should say only from one to nine.
Yeah, okay.
That's how I read the event.
Okay. I just know in the past when people downtown have, you know, been requesting events like this, we were. You know, concerned about the residents and wanted to make sure we had the correct cutoff for, you know, loud live music. So. Thank you.
Yeah, there's a specific line that says the planned hours for the loud sounds. That does say eleven to twelve. We can't, we will formalize that with them.
Thank you.
That being said, I'll take a motion to approve the Stagecoach Special Event Application Request for October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four.
So moved.
Support.
By Councilmember Wolfersberger, supported by Councilmember Gates. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to item twelve C, Planning Commission Annual Report. Derek?
Thank you, Your Honor, members of city council. Since we don't have our new community development director on staff yet, I'm pleased to say by on the twenty-first, she will start. In the future, she'll be reporting this out, but since she's not available and our former director is on to things in Berry County, it falls to me to bring this forward. But essentially, the Michigan Plant, Planning Enabling Act states that the Planning Commission shall make an annual written report to the legislative body. Essentially, this is us fulfilling that obligation. Highlights for two thousand and twenty-three include creating a new zoning district, approving nine site plans. Approved for property rezonings, two special land uses were approved. Two dimensional and three use variances were approved. And of course, they spent a big, a good deal of time preparing for the master plan project, which is now underway for doing. So essentially, those are the highlights, the reports in the packet. It's available for the public to review. So again, if you have any questions, please let me know, but I appreciate the volunteers that serve on the Planning Commission. You know, that's a, a thankless job and do appreciate their volunteerism.
When does this have to be submitted?
Typically, it's within the year. We have, they have to report out to the legislative body. There's no specific criteria. Yeah.
If I may, Your Honor, I'd just like to add, being the council liaison to the Planning Commission, the professionalism that our Planning Commission brings to their meetings. They come well prepared. They have diversity of experience and expertise. I think we're really fortunate to have such a great group. Some of them have been longtime members and very committed to the community. So I'd just like to also express my thank you to them.
Very good. That, I'll take a motion to approve the community engagement software, I'm sorry, receive the Planning Commission Joint Planning Commission and Zoning Board Appeals, two thousand and twenty-three Annual Report.
So moved.
Support. By Councilmember Karen, supported by Councilmember Wolfersberger. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All the same sign. Motion carries. That brings us to item twelve D. Derek?
Yes, twelve D is the versa term, community engagement software contract. We've actually talked about this several times. You may know it better as Spider Tech. It's the community engagement software. A couple of meetings ago, Chief Lankard approached city council and requested that we pursue a grant. We were successful with that. And we'd like to move forward with the software. And in order to do that, of course, we need approval of this contract. So essentially, that's what we're asking for tonight.
Right. The county already has used in this, my understanding, so has Battle Creek. It just puts us online to, to share that information. I think it's a good idea. So.
Yeah, I think I mentioned when this, when the grant application came up before I had, back in the summer, I had reason to interact with the Battle Creek Police Department and, and they sent me these text messages. So even though I was out of state. I was getting updates on what was happening and that was, I mean, it was just fantastic. It was, you know, so much easier to deal with and not wonder what was going on.
I agree with you there as well. I'm taking motion to approve the community engagement software contract for. Or verse, verse the term and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
So moved. Support.
Have a motion by Councilmember Karen, supported by Councilmember Gates. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to item twelve E, R one six signs, signatory resolution. Derek?
Yes, so this is another topic that we've been talking about for a while. Again, how do we enhance and improve the safety to cross the. Michigan Avenue, the traffic circle to get to the fountain circle, right? We know that there's been ongoing issues with that and we've been pretty fortunate not to have something catastrophic occur. So we've been working with M dot over the last year or two to. Come up with additional signage, which they did complete. But one of the things that we thought we'd give a shot is this R one six, which is those. Lower to the ground, what I call reminder signs. They remind folks what, what the law is. Essentially, the state law is yield to pedestrians within the crosswalk. So as part of that, M dot agreed to allow us to place those as a local unit. However, in order to do that, we got to get a permit. And we have to have an, an agreement in place. And that's what this request is before we tonight. We have them purchased. They're actually sitting in the municipal garage, ready to be installed. Once we get this contract executed, we'll get them out there. The agreement does call for them to be removed just for snow removal reasons on November. So we'll only have them out there for a short time. But then they'll reappear again in the spring. And again, we're willing to keep trying different things to help improve that. So. This is one more thing we want to give it, give it a shot.
It was brought up also, you know, maybe signage year round that would say yield to pedestrians and crosswalk, although it is a state statute. And we do have the crosswalk signs out there. These are just kind of that reminder during the winter, summer, when it's most used is, is the goal of this, right? And that should help with the awareness. M dot does the signage out there. And I don't know if they have a sign like that or if that's even legal to put up through them. But that would be something to maybe look at as well.
Absolutely. So all signs are regulated by the Michigan Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Device. It's a huge binder. It's about five inches thick and it tells you what signs you can and cannot place and what those distances can be. So. This is a sign that's permissible. And again, this will at least, again, give us one more indicator out there. So this is a, a sign that's permissible and again, this will at least, again, give us one more um, indicator out there that hey, there might be a resident that's trying to get across and it is your obligation to yield to them.
Right. Um, just if it increases with pedestrian traffic um, through growth or use of that center, uh, there is under city ordinance, it does allow for traffic to stop with the flashing yellow. Um, sign, you see those in Ann Arbor a lot and those areas where there's high um, pedestrian traffic for like the college and, and that. But that's through um, in ordinance and approval. And I don't know if MDOT would approve that at this time, so we are taking the necessary steps to at least bring awareness and attention, I do appreciate that, so.
Well, this, this is the same sign we added to Hughes Street.
Yes.
And that's been very well received, so.
Good, good, yeah, and again, that was a local street, so we could uh, implement that, you know, through a local traffic control order. Um, and, and you'll see, so it's a temporary one right now, but you'll be seeing a permanent traffic control order request uh, in the next few months or so.
Thank you. Any other comment, questions? With that, I'll take a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty six, a resolution to authorize uh, signatories for MDOT contract number two four dash five four zero two and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
So moved. Support.
Motion by council member Wolfersberger, supported by council member Karen, roll call vote, please.
Member Gates?
Yes.
Member Traver?
Yes.
Member Wolfersberger?
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Member Karen? Motion carries, your honor.
Thank you. Uh, that brings it item twelve F, MDOT trunk line contract. Marguerite?
Good evening, uh, the city contracts with MDOT to do maintenance along um, what is called the trunk line. So the trunk line within the city limits is um, Michigan Avenue and um, which is Business Loop ninety four and then South Kalamazoo Industrial and West Drive, which are M two twenty seven. And we have a contract with them that uh, gets renewed every five years and ours is up for renewal. So I'm here tonight to ask uh, for your authorization in renewing that contract. Um, as Mr. Klinger pointed out, I do have a typo in the document, so the Business Loop ninety four trunk line is from Kalamazoo to eight four, eight seventy east Michigan Avenue. So the circle out to eight seventy, which is um, adjacent to the uh, laundry, the um, hmm, yeah. Um, and then M two twenty seven is from the Woolley Drive, southern boundary. Woolley Drive north to Industrial Road, Industrial Road over to West Drive and West Drive back up to Michigan Avenue, where at that point it goes to, onto Michigan Avenue. Our trunk line responsibilities end at that location for M two twenty seven. The county actually takes over the con- the trunk line there west of West Drive. So I appreciate that correction, that was a typo. Um, so we do um, snow removal as part of the trunk line work. We also do plowing, ice control, um, drainage improvements, leaf pickup, um, tree trimming. This includes both work that DPW staff do um, themselves, but also work that we contract out for. Uh, we recently uh, did some work on East Drive and Michigan Avenue for some new storm manholes and we submit that work for reimbursement as well. Uh, the contract would be good through September twenty twenty nine and included in the report is the res- resolution that I'm requesting authorization for the clerk to sign so that we can execute the contract. I'm happy to take any questions.
What is the reimbursement, dollar per dollar or how does that work?
Not, not on everything, um, so sweeping, for example, is, excuse me, snow hauling, for example, is a fifty per fifty ratio. Um, and that is based on the uh, actual measurements of the area in which we snow removal. We do snow removal, we remove snow from Kalamazoo Avenue to Marshall Avenue and, or actually exchange, excuse me. And we get reimbursed for snow removal on the actual traveling lanes. We do not get reimbursed for snow removal on the parking lanes or the sidewalk. So that's why it's um, at a fifty fifty. We do get um, one hundred percent reimbursement on uh, all other activities, plowing, icing, including materials. And then there's a standard admin, admin overhead fee rate, excuse me, that we get reimbursed for.
Thank you. Okay, um, so what we'll do is take a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty seven, a resolution to authorize the MDOT trunk line maintenance contract and authorize the city manager and city clerk to sign the necessary documents.
So moved. Support.
Have a motion by council member Karen, supported by council member Traver, roll call vote, please.
Member Traver?
Yes.
Member Wolfersberger?
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Gates?
Yes.
Motion carries, your honor.
Thank you, bring this item twelve G, MDOT small urban grant uh, construction contract, Marguerite?
We're just rocking and rolling on these MDOT resolutions, so um, staff and I have been working on um, the next, what we call small urban project. Small Urban is the name of a grant program that we participate in and we partner with the county on um, this funding. We rotate years with the found, the, the county and this current fiscal year, uh, actually the fiscal year that just ended by MDOT, so uh, the twenty four fiscal year of MDOT was our funding uh, window. And the project that we had been coordinating was improvements to West Drive and Verona Road as outlined in um, your report. So West Drive from Michigan Avenue to Verona, Verona from West Drive to Mansion Street. Uh, and as part of this program, MDOT holds the entire contract for construction to do the work and they bill the city for the portions of the grant that either are not eligible or that the construction con- the contract is above. So the grant amount is three hundred and eighty five thousand. The project that we scoped, we estimated at eight hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. And um, we had around thirty thousand dollars in ineligible costs in that. So the proposed sidewalk, for example, is an ineligible cost, MDOT does not cover that under the small urban grant. So that requires, that results in funding from the city of about four hundred and thirty thousand. And the resolution that we are asking for authorization on um, speaks to the contract that is also included in your report. Those dollar amounts that I just described are detailed in the contract. And even though the construction total will not be eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars and eighty, eight hundred and fifty cents, that is what the contract is based on. And then the construct, the, the dollar amounts are adjusted as construction is completed. So that's why that is set up that way, um. We have budgeted three hundred thousand dollars in capital outlay for this project from the major streets fund, uh. At this time, we do know the actual bid amounts on the project and luckily, the project came in significantly under than what the estimate was. So uh, our three hundred thousand dollars in our budget should cover the difference between uh, the what the grant does not cover. So what the grant doesn't cover and what the ineligible costs are of the program that we have to cover. So uh, we're asking for approval of contract, excuse me, resolution two thousand twenty four, twenty eight, which was added to your packet late. Um, and um, with that resolution, we will uh, authorize the contract.
Yeah, that is a significant savings and we don't usually get bids coming in under, so.
Yeah, it was quite shocking, um, but and it was not a, it was not low by any significant amount, it was competitive bidding. Uh, one thing that the consultant and I figure is that, that we bid it at this time of the year and said, not construction's not till next year. So we think the timing helped.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I'll take a motion to approve um, resolution to authorize MDOT trunk line maintenance contract resolution number two zero two four dash two eight.
So moved. Support.
Motion by council member Wolfersberger, supported by council member Gates, roll call, please.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Gates?
Yes.
Member Traver?
Yes.
Mayor Schwartz?
Yes.
Motion carries, your honor.
Thank you. That brings item twelve H, Parks and Recreation Five Year Master Plan to set a public hearing, city manager?
Thank you, so our current Parks and Recreation Five Year Master Plan is expiring at the end of this year. Obviously, we want to continue and have a current master plan in place. So the Parks and Recreation Cemetery Advisory Board has been working for the last three, four months with our consultant to develop a new update. Um, the new plan would cover years twenty, twenty twenty five to twenty twenty nine. And not only does it lay out our strategic plan for those five years, it also makes us eligible for state grants, uh, which is important because we need to be pursuing those. Um, the revised, uh, the plan was reviewed and approved by the Parks and Recreation Cemetery Advisory Board at their meeting in September, after a couple of months of review and comments. And the plan requires a thirty day notice uh, period. Um, so we're looking for uh, essentially you to set a public hearing, which is the second important part of that. But the, the plan will be available at city hall, the library, uh, at the choose Marshall offices and on the website over the next thirty plus days for uh, residents, our visitors to read the plan and provide us some additional comments so that when we hold the public hearing on our recommended date of November eighteenth, uh, we'll have those comments in hand and potentially incorporate those if the city council deems that those should be included, so. The request tonight is really to set that public hearing for November eighteenth, twenty twenty four at seven PM to review the plan and potentially adopt it. So we can get it submitted to the state of Michigan and be eligible for those grants.
So if someone has a suggestion, um, comment, they can submit that in writing ahead of time as well.
Absolutely, we would encourage that, yep.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'll move to set the public hearing for the Parks and Recreation Five Year Master Plan adoption from November, November eighteenth, twenty twenty four at seven PM.
Support.
Motion by council member Karen, supported by council member Traver, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion carries. That brings us to item, well, no?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, thank you. Appointments and Elections, Brook Nature Area Advisory Board Appointments, city manager?
Yeah, so the Brooks Nature Area was established as a Marshall City Park on April seventeenth, two thousand and six. Upon its creation, the Marshall City Council established a Brooks Nature Area Advisory Board responsible for the promotion, protection and development of the hundred and eighty nine acre nature area and consists of seven members. Current members Patty Hawk Meluish, I'm probably, okay? And Brian Huggett would like to continue to serve uh, on the Bo- Brooks Nature Area Advisory Board as their current members. Uh, and the, the Brooks Nature Advisory Board held them at their last meeting and recommended the new appointment of Lauren Bruggeman to the Brooks. So that's our recommendation to you tonight.
Thank you. With that being said, I'll take a motion to approve the appointment of Patty Hawk Meluish, Brian Huggett and Lauren uh, Bruggeman to the Brooks Nature Area Advisory Board with terms ending on August fifteenth, twenty twenty seven.
So moved. Support.
Motion by council member Gates, supported by council member Wolfersberger.
Comment?
Yes, sir.
Uh, just for clarification and so it's right on the record, is this supposed to be Meluish, not Meluish? I think the spelling may be wrong, I believe that's Patty Meluish. M E L L U I S H.
I'll defer to you if you think that's the correct, like, that's what we'll do, this is just pulled from the report last time, so.
And she is for reappointment, right?
Yes, it's a reappointment, yes.
I know Patty Meluish.
Meluish?
Not certain if she's on it or not, but it makes sense that she would be, given her um, expertise and background.
We'll verify that spelling if that's who it is, then I think we're all set, but if not, we'll be back before you to, to do a correction.
I'll take a motion to approve uh, with the name change, Patty Hawk Meluish.
Meluish.
Brian Huggett and Lauren Bruggeman to the Brooks Nature Area Advisory Board with terms ending on August fifteen, twenty twenty seven.
So moved. Support.
Motion by council member Gates, supported by council member Traver, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries.
That brings it item thirteen B, Transit Authority of Calhoun County Board of um, Appointment.
All right, the last item for your consideration tonight is the Transit Authority of Calhoun County Board Appointment. Um, you may recall, last November, the Calhoun County Board of Commissioners approved the amended Articles of incorporation for the TAC, which is that Transportation Authority of Calhoun County, in accordance with Public Act one ninety six and nineteen eighty six. Uh, in November, shortly thereafter, the city council approved the recommendation of city resident Tom Tarkwitz to the Calhoun County Board of Commissioners for appointment to the TAC. So the way that process works is we're a participating community, we recommend someone in our community to the Calhoun County Board of Commissioners and then they take that and, and that recommendation and follow through with that appointment. Uh, again, it is ultimately their discretion, but there is some uh, language in the bylaws that they're really supposed to take the recommendation of the, the member of the community. Um, so essentially, we reached out to Tom Tarkwitz, he was appointed for a one year term. He's uh, he's actually the vice chair of the TAC, he's very passionate about it, he's been working hard. Uh, and we're recommending that he get reappointed uh, to that board, or at least that, the recommendation to the Calhoun County Board of Commissioners, so. That's what we're asking for tonight.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Um, I would approve this recommendation just for the fact that I've seen Tom, you know, report on this to multiple, um, you know, entities, he is very passionate, he's got the background and understands, you know, all of the inner workings and I think he's the right person for the, for the position, so.
Yep, he's been working hard for the city.
Very energetic.
Yes.
Take a motion to approve the recommendation of Tom Tarkwitz to the Calhoun County Board of Commissioners for the reappointment to Transportation Authority of Calhoun County, also known as TAC, to represent city marshal, term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty seven.
So moved. Support.
Have a motion by council member Karen, supported by council member Wolfersberger, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, thank you, Tom. Uh, that brings us to item fourteen, public comment on non-agenda items. Persons addressing city council are required to give their name and address for the record when called upon by the mayor. Members of the public shall be limited to speaking for a maximum of two minutes. Commons shall address non-agenda item topics, public hearing items shall have been addressed during the public hearing portion, item ten of the meeting agenda. Agenda items should be addressed during the public common agenda items, item six, portion of the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak on non-agenda items?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. Start with me. Um, I'm gonna speak on, um, I'm gonna read something out of this report that you just spoke about. Master Plan Status. The Planning Commission is responsible for regularly reviewing and updating the master plan to ensure it continues to be relevant to the community's needs. The community's current master plan, two thousand and fifteen city master plan, was adopted on June tenth, two thousand and fifteen. The M P E A requires a formal review and updates or affirmation occur at least every five years. The Planning Commission formally reviewed the master plan in twenty twenty and reaffirmed that it is still relevant for the city, which the intention to update the master plan following the retirement of the city manager and the current mayor deciding not to run for reelection in twenty twenty two. We intend to issue an RFP and update the master plan in twenty twenty four, twenty five. I just wanna say, better late than never. The citizens of Marshall deserve better, we deserve to be communicated with. And more people... And more people are watching and reading and printing these minutes out. And I'm proud of them because we were blindly trusting our officials. And this is what we got. I don't think everybody is um naively waiting for um the bombs to drop. We live in one of the most beautiful cities in Michigan and um I'm heartbroken. I don't know if I'll stay. But I would suggest that you take a look at your districts, your wards, because I don't think they're fair, and they haven't been. Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Kelly Isaac, three two one North Liberty Street, Marshall, Michigan.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, sir.
Barry Wayne Adams again, six twenty two West Green again. Uh. Last Wednesday, we were at our usual protest at the fountain, three thirty to five thirty. And just after we got things set up, a marshal police officer shows up. And he calls everybody over, comes o- over to the fountain, calls everybody over, and and in a state of embarrassment tries to explain to us uh what is necessary about where we can and cannot protest on the fountain. So he was accommodating enough to provide us with a photocopy of uh where we can and where we can't be based on the statute that says that there has to be a hundred foot distance between uh or away from a pulling place for any sort of uh campaign activity. Uh, and as it turns out, the prohibited area on the fountain is a little sliver, about fifteen feet wide, maybe three feet wide at the uh at the most, right at the edge of the uh curb. Uh, a place that we never stand or place signs anyway. But uh somebody felt it was necessary to complain. I think we know who it is. Uh, and had to waste police resources to come over and explain to us something that uh wasn't even relevant. But uh this is, this is the kind of unconstitutional application, you know, misfeasance, doing an official job in a wrongful manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on that? Yes, ma'am. State your name and address for the record, please.
Julie Bryant, Squaw Creek. Um, just kind of wanted to give you a little report here about the things that are heating up for MADA. Um, the Economic Development Responsibility Alliance has been working with Eagle. Hopefully, y'all know who that is. Uh, asking for enforcement for environmental permitting regulations at the Megamass. Um. They are calculating the cleanup and the impact costs of the environmental damage to the wetlands and Kalamazoo watershed caused by MADA's project to date. Um. And working to deny all future permit renewals until all violations have been fully resolved. And MADA has made full financial compensation for damage. Which brings me to this point, City Ordinance fifty four. Why is the city violating their own stormwater ordinance by letting MADA keep on polluting the Kalamazoo River from the Megamass? Okay, according to the ordinance number fifty four point oh two, fifty four point oh three, the city should cite MADA for all of the erosion and the sediment going into the river. And that's you guys' job. Okay, we've we've put up with enough crap from you guys, all this being pushed on us now that, you know, just like we said, the river and right now we don't have to deal with chemicals yet. So this needs to get taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish? Yes, ma'am.
Rebecca Sebring-Fredonia Township. Secretary of the Air Force, Frank Kendall. He noted that the Indo-Pacific region faces increasing threats from the Chinese Communist Party. This warning was made during the Air and Space Force Association Convention earlier this week. Now, according to the U S Department of Defense, the Secretary of the Air Force stated this, quote, "I've been closely watching the evolution of China's military for fifteen years. China is not a future threat. China is a threat today." Ordinary technology, that is the things you and I use on a day-to-day basis, smartphones to our cars, are able to be weaponized in war. This is now coming to the forefront after a recent incident in Lebanon and Syria, where exploding pagers and walkie-talkies killed at least thirty seven people and wounded around three thousand. Now, the attack's being blamed on Israel. Israel denies it. But now Chinese technology is being brought up in light of this, and it's even becoming a bigger. The U S Deputy Secretary of State Kurt Campbell just declared during a House Foreign Affairs Committee hearing that the threat from the Chinese Communist Party is greater than the threats of the Cold War. The Deputy Secretary of State also warned of the intensity of the ties between China and Russia. The United States is now declaring that China, the Chinese Communist Party, is the main nuclear threat against the world. And it's also expanding its missile defense systems in countries around China as a way to deter that threat. This is taking place also as the newly revised nuclear defense strategy has shifted from recognizing Russia as the main one and now saying the CCP is the main focus. And as this happened, Chinese Communist Party is doubling down on its military ties.
Yeah, thanks for moving them into town.
Anyone else wishing to speak on non-agenda items? That brings us item fifteen, Council and Manager's communication. Council member Gates.
Nothing this week. Thank you.
Council member Karen.
Nothing further. Thank you.
Council member Traver.
Nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
Council member Wolfersberger.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor. I got a couple of things. Just uh want to remind everyone, the master plan community open houses are this week, Thursday, October tenth. First session's at the Marshall District Library. That's being held from three to four thirty P M. And then session two is at the Dark Horse Brewing. Uh, that's from six to seven thirty P M. Again, same information. Pick pick the one you want to go to. And again, this is the first of at least uh well, I'm sure there'll be another one after they've gathered some more community input. Um, also want to remind folks on that same day, Thursday's Public Power Week Open House at the the power uh pub- uh, excuse me, the Public Services Building. Uh, they will have some tours. They'll have the bucket trucks. They'll have some some food and stuff. So I encourage folks to come out, and that's from two to six thirty P M. So there's several things you can do in the city related to that. And then finally, uh we do that in the Marshall Waterways Days Rotary Club sponsoring that. And that's Saturday, October twelfth, from ten A M to three P M. The events at Ketchum Park, but they're requesting folks park at the B E Henry Building, and then there'll be a shuttle there. So again, quite a few things coming up this week.
Thank you. Clerk?
Absentee ballots are available currently for the November fifth election. Um, additionally, early voting will start on October twenty sixth over at the county building um with the election day on November fifth.
Thank you. Um, I have nothing to bring forward. Uh, take a motion to adjourn. Port. Motion by council member Karen, supported by council member Traver. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. We're adjourned.
Yes, thank you.